We'll call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge. So, the first part of the meeting is a public meeting on location of the dog park. We had warned it as consideration of a airport property in Academy Street. I think we, the board has all received a lot of feedback. I don't want to speak for the board, but I think Academy Street is off the table at this point in time. If I'm wrong, let me know.
No, I don't think this speaks for itself. Unless you're all here to say you support it.
But I still...
Seriously though?
I don't think that's the case, Joe.
I didn't think so, based on the phone calls I got from most of them.
So, I mean, I just wanted to recognize that ahead of time because I still want everybody to have time for, you know, to make a public comment. As, you know, it's important, we've, you know, we're looking at the, we were looking at Academy Street because there's some recreation area up there. We're looking at the airpark because, you know, there's some land up there. The part that we're maybe throwing on the table tonight for discussion is we're looking at possibly down behind, in the rec fields, down behind the Junior Bay Brewth Field, down in the, that park area. So, you know, it's, it's a hard, everybody wants the dog park, but until they know where it's going, you know, everybody, you know, they support it, but it's gotta be in the right location where everybody is in support of it. It's a good project. We want it to happen, but it's, we want it to happen where every, I mean, we're never gonna get everybody, but, you know, when, most folks are in support of it. So, I think that's the goal of the select board. The town manager, I know that's the goal, and the committee that's working on a dog park, that's everybody's goal. So, I mean, with that in mind, I want to still give everybody time to talk about it. There's not, is there anybody online, Joe?
Aaron Kerber and Pam Alexander are online.
Okay. So, I'd like to start here with folks in the room, give each, everybody, you know, a few minutes to say what you have to say, but, and then we'll go to the folks if anybody online wants to comment, and then we can open up discussion with the board. Anybody want to start out? Okay, go ahead.
For starters, you put me at ease already with what you're saying. So, merely what I'm saying is put it on record, but there's no argument. Everything you said was, was kind of what I'm gonna say. Just for the record, my name's Robert Sterling. My family and I reside at the Gray House, actually immediately right across from the, we're right on Altofer Avenue.
Yep.
I want to say right where the mouse is, is my daughter's schoolroom, and to the left, just a little bit, is our bedroom. I work different shifts, so activity during the day is gonna keep me a little more awake, and that's where my daughter goes to school every day, so it is a direct impact on us. We're here to voice our objection to the, yeah, my wife told me to keep it with Sison right now, so, so anyone knows me, I can go for a while. We're here to voice our objection to the dog park being placed across from our home or any residential neighborhood, but we certainly support the town having more things that people can do. So, I don't want to come across as that. It's just very difficult right where, where it is. We believe the dog park will have a direct impact on the value of our home and the safety and quality of our home. Increased number of traffic on the road, increased number of dogs. I train dogs. I know that dogs don't always do what they're supposed to do and trained to do, and so it becomes a liability concern we have as a family of other people's dogs. We already have a few neighbors that probably should be dog owners somewhere around, I don't know who we are yet, but. Parking dogs and movement of cars and people will increase the noise in our neighborhood, and I already know where my daughter's home, schoolroom is. One of the things I looked at was the 2016 town plan in it, that the South School Playground, just easterly to Eagles Club on Academy Street is not now being used. I'd actually argue that it considerably is being used now. Kids were playing today, every few days, there's already kids in there playing baseball and other events. When we first moved there, when I first moved there, there were always T-ball games and events, and I actually kind of missed them. I know part of why they, why they stopped, but you knew kind of what time they were gonna happen, and kids were loud and fun, and they were kids, and we have kids, so we accept that and enjoy that. And one of the things that it said is, in the town plan, is we should see what can be done to develop it into a real park. My daughter was gonna come here today and tell you she would love to see a jungle gym or something built on that property. I'm kind of like, well, that might be a lot of kids, but that's what we pay taxes for is so that our children have things to do. So, we live in a village. If, if a child park showed up there, we knew, living across the street, that that was always a possibility. So, we wouldn't be here to oppose it because that's what was expected and in the town plan. The other is, just to make sure, has the town considered the legal liabilities of the dog park? Obviously, with the leagues of cities and towns, we want it to happen. I know there's stuff, West Rockland has a pretty good park and things. Just as a taxpayer, it'd be something to make sure we've crossed our keys and dotted our i's and things on liability and increased any insurance. And the concern is, what is there to guarantee on the continued upkeep and maintenance? I run Fish and Wildlife access areas, they're great with volunteers that last about four or five years, and then now it's up to taxpayers to make sure that area gets cleaned up and maintained and dog poop. So, volunteers tend to work very, very well, but what is the long-term plan of it? Because the town folks that are already doing maintenance and work on roads and things, how much time are they gonna have to also maintain a dog park if they became their responsibilities? And so, again, I just wanted to reiterate that we're in support of the dog park. I don't know where either. I tried looking, I contacted folks up at Wetlands, and I suppose I could tell by walking to the airport, but it is all Wetland, all of it, I mean, just about. So, I understand where the town's concern is, being able to put it there, they're not making that up. It is truly a Wetland everywhere. So, if people are questioning, why the dog, why not the original area, I looked at the Water Resources maps, and that's why the town has the concern about being there. It's not the town's concern, it's the state of Vermont, not where I work, but it is that. So, I understand that there's definitely issues there. So, we support it, we hope it can work out. It's not you guys attacking us, but it's kind of right in our neighborhood. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next? Yeah, go ahead.
Paul Corby, 13 Academy Street. My house has the Blue Roof, right across from me, this club.
Yep.
We are in favor of a dog park, like Rob told me, but our concerns are with added new, I would say, a little bit more traffic. There is a lot going on, and we expect a lot more to go on in the Eagles Club with their formation of the Motorcycle Club. That is one thing that creates a lot more traffic, which is a little more dangerous. There is one thing in there that I haven't seen mentioned. We've got some 18-wheelers that come down that street every morning, 4:00 AM, 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM. Weight-wise, I think they're way over the limit for that street. The last I knew, an 18-wheeler, and there's one 22-wheeler that comes down through there. I don't know if he's full or empty, it doesn't matter. But at the end of the street where it goes onto 22A, take a look at it. The right-hand side, right by Mr. Brown's house, is starting to cave in, and that was paved two and a half years, three years ago. If those trucks happen to come back anytime during the day, which they do, there's a couple of milk trucks that come back through there, and there's kids and dogs and whatever running around, that could be a very heavy liability. One of my concerns is where, if it was put on that property, would the parking be, and what would be the cost of the parking and paving, as is the same thing over in the West Rockland area? That, to me, would be a concern. And who's gonna take care of it? You know, we're gonna plow it in the winter, what are we gonna do? And could someone here tell me exactly, is it just that whole green area is the town's property, and the rest belongs to the Eagles Club?
I believe the property line is right in this area.
We have a picture of that, right, Joe?
Joe might have a, the actual map.
Oh, somewhere, if I can pull it up.
I think, I think I saw it. So, it's basically the...
It's right in this area, yes. It comes down, it comes down into here.
Okay.
It's a double lot.
Yeah, the double lot into the back.
Oh, it does go into the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Howdy, use the little playground that's still back there.
Right in the back.
I saw it, it looked like, it looked something like a soccer goal or something is back in there.
Yeah.
Swing, it's a swing set. There's a swing set, some of those little, spring-loaded.
My wife and I are very interested in animals. We've had them, horses or whatever. When we lived in Oracle, we were in Oracle, I was born there, we're there for 54 years. We love animals. I support Murphy, I support that totally, and I'm Rob's neighbor, and I think it's just one of those things. In that neighborhood, it's just not, it's not applicable.
All right. Next, Ron, did you, are you listening, or do you wanna?
I'll listen for now.
Okay. Chris, are you?
One thing I just wanted to say is, the kids on the south side, you know, that side of town, that's the only field that the kids can actually play a game in. So, the kids up here, they go to the grade school, but down there, that's the only field. So, my kids use it all the time, and there's other kids that use it. So, I'm, I'm against the dog park there. Well, I'm totally for it somewhere else.
Yeah. Do we know where that somewhere is, though, yet?
I guess I gotta say something.
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
I firmly believe the town has the perfect spot for it. Wetland or not wetland, is right up at that airport. And if you cannot find an acre or a half acre up there, let's just stop and think how many wild animals walk on them wetlands, and that's perfectly fine. And let's remember, that airport property has been used for generations as a dog park already. I ran that archery league for 10 years, saw a lot of people come up there, get out, and there goes the dog, they go up the runway, night after night after night. So, it's already a dog park. What I'm asking this board to do is to respect all your neighbor, neighborhoods, not just Academy. I would oppose it down at the, behind the graded school. There's houses there. You get one dog barking, you get two dog barking, and now you got the whole neighborhood barking. It happens, it happens with the neighbors' dogs.
It does happen.
The dogs, but that's it, you know? We accept that. There's some things we accept. I'm not worried about wetlands. We walked on that ground for 10 years, running that archery league, and we think nothing of, there's a lot more wild animals walking on them wetlands than a few dogs going up there. In a bit, take hardball in the state, then do it. And don't consider anybody's neighborhood. Have the respect for each neighborhood. Put it up where it should go. Find a spot, zero in on it, and I think it'll work perfect up there. Respect the Kendles, though.
All right.
That's what I would ask.
Yep. Thank you, Ron. Others? Frank, anything?
Paul.
Paul?
Well, I'm not so sure that I should even be allowed to say anything, 'cause I'm not a resident.
I know, but your opinion's, it matters.
I agree with Ron 100%. It's the perfect, perfect place for it. I don't think it meets the criteria for a wetland that I've researched at all. I believe Jeff takes hay out there almost every single year, so it certainly can't be that wet. There's no type of aquatic vegetation up there that I ever saw, other than grass. It's the perfect location. These women did a lot of work, they raised a lot of money, with the assumption of be up there, you got a nice pavilion with shade, you got water there already, you got bathrooms there already, you got a road there where you can make a little parking lot, everybody be out of harm's way, and it'd be just like the salt shed and the DPW building. If it's the only place for it, the wetland doesn't matter anyways. That's where it should go.
I think it should go at the airport myself.
What's that?
I think it should go to the airport myself.
Yeah.
And like Ron said, there's, everybody takes their dog up there now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I have to agree with these gentlemen.
Can you just state your name so clear?
Heidi Elias.
Yep.
We live up here on North Main Street, and our property of that's the recreation.
Yep.
And I know neighbors on each side of us as well are not in agreement of it being there because of the dogs barking and what have you, and I like to take my little two-year-old granddaughter down our back steps to the playground. And it's, it's just a plain fact, animals are animals, and not all owners are responsible owners. I work for a vet, I know this very well. So, we are definitely opposed to it, to being at the, down back behind the grade school. And I agree, I love taking my black lab up to the airport and letting her run, but when I see somebody else, that's it, she's on my side, and we don't, the liability is a huge concern. I'm, hey, if people want to take their dogs to a dog pit, that's great, I'm not really one to do that, just because animals are animals, you just can't throw animals in with other ones, you just don't know what they're gonna do. But we are definitely opposed to having it in the back of our yard.
Brian, did you?
Well, I have a question. I don't know if they're allowed in this type of format. I know ours are crazy sometimes.
Yeah, let's just get everybody to get an initial, and then we can come back. Lorraine, did you wanna? I think everybody else is gone, but...
I'm just opposed to having it on Academy Street.
Yep.
Because it's always been south-side playground.
Joe, is there anybody online that...
We have Pam Alexander still online. Pam, do you have a question or comment for the board of selection?
Can you hear me?
Oh, that doesn't sound, yeah, I can hear you.
Well, this is Keith Alexander, and my wife's working right now, and we are both opposed with, against the proposal of putting the dog park down back here on the rec center. We don't think it's very right to combine a bunch of dogs with a bunch of kids. It doesn't match. Airport is a better solution. You've heard numerous people already propose it. It's a no-brainer to me, but you guys gotta make the choice on that, but we're definitely opposed to having you guys put the dog park down here where the kids get to play. I don't think there's any place, you show me a community where they put a dog park in the same location where they got all the kids playing. That's a, that's a recipe for disaster right there, but you guys make the choice, we're opposed to it, both my wife and I.
All right, thanks, Keith. Anybody else, Joe, online?
Uh, nope, just Aaron.
Okay. Rob, go ahead.
So, I had some contacts, obviously, with a lot of resources, I looked at the Wetlands, and I, although I know it gets very wet in the spring, I, I was surprised to see exactly how much, according to their maps, actually worked. So, in defense of the town, I just wanted to say that I looked at all those maps, all the concrete talks that the town manager has had up in there, and so I see where all those maps show. What I wasn't able to determine was exactly where. I know there's a very small portion right beside the pavilion, but that would be really, really close now to the Kendles, which that makes them have, they would have the same pressure we would have, so I wouldn't support it being right by the pavilion for their respect either. Where is there a spot without looking at all the maps, 'cause I couldn't see farther up, and then, you know, I've always had a few feelings about the runway and this and that. I've flown in and out of there, and I think it's great that we closed that, 'cause now I'm still alive, I have no idea. Never should have been flying airplanes in and out of there, but where up there, do we have some ideas? I understood that there was some cost of having to build, rebuild parts of Munga Road, I understand only parts of it are Class IV now, onto the woods. Where would an option be? I think that's the best location as far, as far as we see. Now, taking into account what the state is saying, Water Resources, please know I work Fish and Wildlife, not Water Resources. Where is a location, and then what kind of cost would we be looking at? Would it be at the other end of the runway? Would it be, do we have a spot that's not...
Linda, do you wanna? I know you guys have looked further up. I don't want to throw you under either, but...
I mean, I've looked at the maps, but I haven't seen it myself.
She might be able to explain better, 'cause...
If you see where the runway curves around, that far north end, and so you're looking at, there is nothing left of Munga Road. If you're looking at having to build Munga Road to have the dog park up there, it's not gonna happen. The town will never pay to have that road, I mean, you're talking megabucks. The other option is, you do away with the runway, because that is now your road to get in there, and there go the RC flyers. Well, if you're getting rid of the RC flyers, plonk it in the middle of the runway. I mean, so, it, that just doesn't work. My question, though, is, the area, and I'd asked Joe when we first went up to look, and I said, where the community garden is, is a dry spot, it's got a beautiful view across, why couldn't the dog park go there? And he said that the, the salt shed is going right where the community garden is, but when I was at the last town meeting, he was pointing out in the middle of the road crap pile, behind the road crap pile, which is quite a long distance from that corner, and I'm wondering why that corner wouldn't have worked. It's dry up there, it's got parking, it's farther away from the Kendles. It makes no sense.
I think he drew it wrong at the last meeting.
I looked at the maps, and it does show right where the mountain is right now with the salt shed.
Oh, okay, 'cause he said it was right behind, in the middle of the pile and stuff.
The map, the DPC has is right there.
Originally, it was gonna be here on, on top of the concrete to reduce impact of wetlands.
Right.
But with the idea of moving the entire DPW up in this area, we bumped the salt shed down here, and then the DPW building would be more in this area here.
All right, so what about the area that we marked out that would, it looked like it would avoid the wetlands, it, you wouldn't have to rebuild Munga Road, and it wouldn't cut off the runway? I know that Joe went out, Carol went out, and Glenn went out to look at our...
Correct.
Yeah. So, and that was moving, yeah, that was moving the fencing back further, so it was at the far side of that barbecue grill thing, so it was farther away from Kendles. We discussed planting bushes, putting up the screen on the fence, things to kind of avoid, you know, make a buffer for them, but I haven't heard anything about what, you know?
The state also said that the water, from what I correctly come wrong, Joe, or how I read this, that the fenced dog area was not a problem with wetlands. The problem became when the first structure came up that was added to help the dogs, and when the new, what happened, I guess in Shelburne, I think it was, is a new group of people that came to manage the dog park didn't know that they weren't allowed to build anything, so as soon as they put out a bunch of toys for the dog, or they put out a bunch of shelters, then Water Resources jumped in and said, well, no, you can't build that little shelter for the dogs, you can't build this everything. So, the concern is, you can go ahead and put it anywhere you want it there along the wetlands, as long as the only thing you do is put in a fence and let the dogs run, but as soon as you added anything, your tires or any of those type of things, it required the permitting, and so that's where the town's running into the battle.
They won't allow you to cut the grass.
We were on a, we can't even mow, right?
That's what I heard.
Unless it's, so where we're getting the way mowing up there now is that it's under a tag, is the reason that they're letting us do that. So, they said we can't...
Two, three times.
Up to four is what they're saying, when we researched it for the dog park. So, they said, if you, if you're only gonna cut it less than four times, and you can't put anything in there, you can't add any gravel, and what else? That's it.
Yeah, you can't make substantive changes. You can use it as it is, so cut it three or four times a year, you can't add things that will impact the wetlands.
So, I'm not saying I agree with it, I'm just throwing out that this is what the board is thinking. Those are the hoops that they've made out for us.
But that still isn't answering my question of, the way we mapped it out, why that would not work.
In this area here, Linda?
Is that a little close to the Kendall? I wanna be, I think, Ron, you mentioned about making sure you're looking, you're looking at the interest of the residents. It might be a little close to the Kendall property. If we could go further north.
Okay. Excuse me.
Yeah, Ron, go ahead.
Right where you want to put that, that's where the practice target was, and then we had our 10 targets, and we went all the way up with targets to where that narrows. And, yeah, right about to there, back, at least to there, and I never got a complaint 10 years from the Kendles, except one. When the gate was open, Bruce come out and shut that, and told me in short terms that that gate, otherwise that's, you know, Indianapolis Speedway up through there. And as long as that gate was always, you know, kept shut, I never got a complaint from the Kendles. And we shot 80 guys one year, or people, I should say, there was women also, and, you know, at the height of our archery league, and that's...
When was that, Ron? I mean, how many days a week and hours, stuff like that?
There was guys up there seven days a week.
Yeah, just practicing, but the bulk was Sundays and Monday nights.
Yes. There was always people up there.
They were randomly up there all the time.
And...
Yeah, but not a big group, though. Except for Sundays and Mondays.
And this dog park will never reach what we had up there on a Sunday or a Monday.
I don't think so.
And I've got a question. You go around the, the south end of the runway.
Yeah.
Okay, take a left and come down.
Down here.
All wetland.
The whole deal, I'm pretty sure that was all identified.
No, I parked my truck down there.
Which I...
Beer season time, and it's bone dry.
I'm with you.
I don't think anybody disagrees with it.
Problem is, it's easier to put things on a wetland map than to get it off the wetland map.
Yeah. Frank, go ahead.
I researched this wetland thing, and by, what I found on the state side is if you call your regional manager here and bring him up and explain the situation, it looks to me like it's not a long, drawn-out process to have that particular piece of land or any, in any town withdrawn from a wetland designation. And second of all, there's not that much more to lay down the bullmaggots on that Munga Road to make it just like it is from way up at the end down, compared to what it used to be, it's like a superhighway. You're sending a guy up there with a loader for three, four hours, and it's done. And my third, my third thing is that it's illegal for a town to gate off a Class IV road anyways, it's against the state statute.
If you look, I don't believe that part of Munga Road is on listed as a town map. I did my research for Fish and Wildlife Enforcement, and I can write somebody for loaded firearm on the public highway when it's in the woods, but if you look on the town maps, Munga Road doesn't continue anymore past the woodbath.
The Munga Road is on the town map, but 2016 has 1.66 miles at a Class IV road.
I gotta agree with Frank.
Huh?
I agree with you on that one.
Well, I know it is, 'cause I read it the other day.
I think you're both...
One at a time here.
You're both probably right on, there was a lot of confusion of whether Munga Road got discontinued on the far end.
I've never had...
I did some research, and it did not. It's a class, even though it's, it's a Class IV road.
But that's what you're listing online.
Right.
If you look at the dotted line, and that's what I have to go to for my Title X, Fish and Wildlife.
And I, and it's clear of just saying, I agree with you, Frank, it's wrong.
I, I agree with you, but that's your town.
That's what you go by, yeah. That's, that's your site, not...
So, I think Frank's first point, I believe, and Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, Zapata from the regional came up to the airport with you and did a walkthrough. Did you just want to explain that process?
Zapata George came up there and looked at that. Zapata George came up there and looked at that?
Yeah.
Corridge.
Yeah.
Corridge.
Right.
Yeah. So the process for building on the wetlands, which you can build on wetlands if there's no other viable location.
Which we may be, we may be proving now, right?
Maybe.
Maybe.
So we have to hire a contractor to delineate the wetlands. Then the state comes out, in this case, it's Zapata. And she reviews the site. She reviews what our contractor says. And then she either agrees or disagrees with the assessment. And that will set where the wetland boundaries are.
And what are you going to delineate with a contractor?
The wetland boundaries.
Oh, the boundary?
The boundaries of the wetland, yeah. And they walked this entire location. Because we thought originally it might be nice to put the town garage kind of back here, because you can use that road. And they considered this entire location wetland. There was a dry spot way north, right where the Munger comes into the, comes into the runway.
Isn't she scheduled to come back in May or June?
Yeah. We put that on pause to see what.
What the feedback?
Yeah, what the feedback was for the other locations. But yes, she said that would be easy to re-delineate to show where the land, wetlands are.
So I guess I would reverse the question. Is there any ideas of, we got, definitely got feedback on the airport. I got feedback on Academy, feedback behind the ball fields. Are there any other spaces in town? Any other options that folks can think of?
I wanted, I had two people that called me that couldn't be at this meeting.
Oh, yeah, read that into your.
That wanted to give some feedback.
Yep.
One was Sally Moore about not supporting a dog park down in the playground where the kids would be for multiple reasons. And also Norm Badness. Now, in all fairness, I think they thought it was that the proposed place was right immediately off their deck. But either way, when I talked to them, they said they really thought we could, less, the same theme you've been hearing here, less residential area was what they'd like to see it in. So I just want to make sure we capture that.
Chris, one other thought?
Yeah, go ahead.
You brought it up, so I'm going to word it this way.
Yep.
As a select board consider, you might have to run a small ad to try to find out if there's a landowner in this town that's not in the wetlands or floodplain that might be willing to lease the dog park organization an acre of land for a buck a year.
I guess that's what I was kind of getting at. And I don't know that answer. I don't believe Joe has pursued that, but.
No donations have come up yet.
Have we put word out that we were asking?
Not to my knowledge.
No, but we, that's a great idea.
There might be somebody out there that would be willing to set aside an acre that's very accessible that doesn't fall under these negative conditions. Just an idea for you to think about.
Do your homework on how we handle liability on that.
That would be, a home, a property owner would definitely, I personally balk at that. But, yeah.
You personally what, Joe?
I would, to at least, I would probably, if it was my land, I would probably balk at that too, because you know how people sue people.
I'm sure there's a way to insure it.
There is, I'm sure there is.
If the town leases it, then the town's insurance should cover it.
Yes.
But I guess I was hoping you'd do your homework and just make sure that was correct.
Yes.
The town's liability would automatically, I should, I've been around enough insurance policy stuff. Know that.
Release the cost relation cap.
Yeah.
And I guess that gets back to my original point, is it's a great project. I want to do it right, get it in the right spot so people are supportive of it. And if we have to take a little more time to get to that point, I'd rather do it upfront than put it someplace where folks don't want it. And then it's, just becomes a nightmare for everybody. I think we need to take our time and get it in the right spot. Where that is, I know where two spaces aren't, where it won't be, but.
How much space is there between Vermont's structure where the dam, on south side again?
There's houses on the other side of the river.
Too close? I'm just asking a question.
There's a couple houses right there, two or three.
What about, you guys were saying the salt shed's moving. What if you did it behind the town garage?
That's floodplain.
Well, if you just put a fence on it.
Well, can we, we can build a fence, right? We just can't build a full-time thing?
We still got houses down around there.
Well, you got a town garage there, too.
Right.
Dogs have got to be a lot of water in the water.
That's a lot when you go to that town garage.
Public works is a move so hard.
It's gonna be a lot.
That's the promise. Do you want to wait a couple of years, or?
Probably the water treatment plant would be out. There's probably nothing up there, plus I've got town water and dog poop. So I don't get out only because I know there's town land up there. But I'm seeing many negatives as I'm even saying it.
This has got to be a lot more deer around that pond than there are dogs.
My deer are fine, yeah. They're pooping and everything.
Trouble with the relish, too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, never mind. I should have thought of that. I tried to pretend.
You have one more? Is there anybody else remotely that has any comment for the dog park?
I have one little comment.
Yeah, I think there's somebody on.
Oh, okay.
I'll give him a second. Anybody online for a comment on the dog park location? Okay, Linda, go ahead.
Okay, I just have one statement question. I know that it came up being a good neighbor with the Kendles. But one of the first things that Sharon brought up to me was they didn't want an increase of traffic. They didn't want all that. And so I said, but they're going to put a salt shed and maybe the DPW garage. But I don't hear the town worrying about being a good neighbor by planting trucks in and out of there. So it just kind of seems like an oxymoron to me that they're worried about the dog park, but they're not worried about irritating the neighbors with increased traffic of heavy trucks, day and night, especially during winter storms. I don't get it. So that's my only statement question.
Did you guys consider that at all when you cited that? I mean, I wasn't on the board at that point in time.
I was hoping that it would be further back on the other side when we started this project. And the wetlands have pushed us over there. But, yeah, the beepers are worrying me a little bit.
Yep.
So I also had some feedback from residents. Ms. Deborah, I hope I say this right, Waggett, from Five Academy, is also opposed to the dog park. And I reached out, I also got calls from Ms. Moore and Mr. Badness as well. Ms. Inferna from the school also expressed her concern about during school hours, children and dogs kind of potentially co-mingling down at the ballpark, at the ball field, as well as Ms. Olson Farrell expressed the same concerns of traffic and dogs and children down at the school on the playground.
Any other comment from the public? And then I'll let the board, there's questions from the board.
I just want to say thank you. I've dealt with a lot of state things where you say things that you don't feel you're listened to.
Yeah.
And as a taxpayer, I really appreciate you listening to all of us having this meeting in the first place, because I don't feel like my voice wasn't heard today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Any comments from the board for the public hearing? I don't believe there'll be any action tonight. I mean, we're just, if it was for feedback. Obviously, Joe and, the board can give Joe direction if they want on what they would like him to pursue.
And I think as we come up with a different plan, we'll be sure to include everybody. And it's, nothing's going to be done secretly, so don't worry about that.
Anybody else?
I would just like a real number on what it is going to cost to put some grindings in the road to extend Munger Road down and so they'd have access. Because I don't think it's going to be as cost prohibitive as some people think.
But weren't Kendles wanting the gate shut so people weren't making a runway?
Or come out from, by the hangar and go out. You know, where they're driving now. Just make that road better. I, it is town road, so I just.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find a spot.
Frank already gave us a bid on the project, three hours.
He did, okay.
Three hours and an afternoon.
With a shovel, or?
If you let, if you let, if you let somebody use those grindings, I bet you I could find somebody who would do nothing.
Yeah. I don't think it would.
Because it's not that big a deal.
Yep.
It really isn't.
It's not that far from the gate.
It's not that far. He walked there.
Mostly it's already done.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's better than ever.
It's a thousand times better than it ever was, and it was done a long time ago. I don't know why they put that gate up.
Yeah.
The only one comment that I have, it's, I hear we are looking for a place for it and everything. And I keep looking, we have 162 acres up at the airport. If we can't figure out a dog park, I don't understand how we're going to get a lot of other things done. I don't know, personally, but that's just.
Chris, one last comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
On this Munger Road. I think your main line comes down through there. We started putting them grindings in when I was back on the board.
Yeah.
And the main reason, if we ever had to go up there in the dead of the spring in mud season.
Get in there.
Yeah, you're going, get a machine up there. How are you going to get a dump truck up there?
Yep.
To do any work to that main water line coming down.
The way it was.
And the idea was to finish that to the gate, not meaning we'd unlock the gate. But so you could leave and shoot straight up through there. Your board might want to consider doing that for that reason. So you've got something, a solid base if you ever have to work on that main water line in the bad times of the year.
It's so close to being done. And I'd love to see the airpark.
Yeah.
You know, we have so many pieces.
When I got off the board, it stopped.
And you go, oh, anything going on?
Right on the north end of the runway, there's a high spot.
Yeah.
I thought that would be, they're perfect.
That's where that road's down.
But we talked about that spot.
Every year, we put more grindings.
Where the payment grounds were stacked.
North end of the runway.
Of course, I do hide my work at earjacks.
All right, anything else? Everybody, okay. Anything from the board? All right, so we'll close the public hearing at 7:15. We'll take a five-minute break before we reconvene the select board meeting.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll call the select board meeting back to order at 7:21. Amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments needed?
No, sir, I have no amendments tonight.
Okay, anybody else? Approval of amendments from April 6?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 6.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Glenn motioned to approve the minutes from April 6. That was seconded by Carol. Questions, changes? Comments?
I didn't sign that one.
All right, all in favor of approving the amendments?
Aye.
That motion carries. Five minutes for public comment?
I'd like to.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just wanted to talk to you guys on behalf of myself and the committee.
Yeah.
We propose doing a market on Fridays in Fairneaven on the south side of the park, near the cannon, along the south perimeter of the park, starting in July and running until the middle of October. Anyway, the committee is made up of Fairneaven residents, myself, Linda Barker, Arthur Licona, Melissa Knapp, Derek Miller, and Vicky Shattuck. Anyway, we propose calling it the Fairneaven Street Market.
Street market?
Street market. And you may wonder, like, we already have a farmer's market that meets on Thursdays. Like, why do we need another market? We have been thinking that, because, you know, the town has been organizing these Fairneaven Fridays events in front of the commercial building. And, okay, because of COVID, it was off last year, and there'll be a few events this year. But we're hoping, you know, as the COVID crisis passes and things get, you know, more things get off the ground, it'd be nice to have a market on Fridays that would make more of a draw down towards that end of the park. The ways it would differ from the current farmer's market is that for the farmer's market, like, it's run by the Vermont Farmers Market Association. That people, like vendors who want to participate, they have to pay a membership fee. And then if they want to participate for the whole season, it's quite a lot of money. So what we're proposing is to have a market that would be a town-sponsored event. We were thinking to charge $5 per vendor. They can just participate week to week. And the money could go to pay for things like maybe acoustic musicians or something like that. Just a little entertainment budget to make it a little more lively atmosphere. Anyway, one thing about the Vermont Farmers Market is that it's quite restrictive on what vendors are allowed to sell. So as an example, say, last year, when Linda wanted to do fundraising for the children's playground, she was told she couldn't set up there. Well, at first, the coordinator said, oh, yeah, sure, that would be great. And then when she took it to the board of the Vermont Farmers Market, they said, oh, actually, sorry, we can't do that.
No fundraising.
No fundraising. People are only allowed to sell what they themselves have produced. So that's a bit restrictive. Like, personally, I feel that there's a need for a market for people who, maybe they're very small producers. Maybe there's a crafter who just has a few little things that they make, they want to give something a try, to have to pay the Vermont Farmers Market membership. It's just, it's too prohibitive for what, you know, the, taking that little risk. So anyway, $5, it's not a big risk, you know? So for those people, for people who would say, home gardeners, who maybe they have extra tomatoes or squash or something like that that they want to sell just for a couple of weeks during the summer, it'd be nice to encourage as many people to participate as possible.
But it wouldn't be a flea market.
Right, and absolutely no flea market stops, you know? So that's the general idea, okay? And just so you know, I have spoken to the president of the Vermont Farmers Market, Paul Horton. He's fine with it, you know, absolutely gives it his blessing. And then I talked to Aunt Finley, who's the local coordinator of the Fairneaven Market on a Thursday. And she said, actually, they've discussed back and over about maybe changing back to Fridays, but they already decided on Thursday for this year. And she said, you know, she and maybe some of the vendors would just try Fridays if we were to do it and see how it goes. Like, it's actually a good opportunity to kind of test to see which day would work better. So, um, I don't know if you're like, you're aware, like, the Vermont Farmers Market, they originally did meet on Fridays. They changed to Thursdays to kind of try to go along with the concerts, maybe to take advantage of the concert crowd. And then, um, it's just a little awkward. So, anyway, um, just wanted to, you know, let you know what we were thinking about and.
Yeah.
And see if you have any concerns or questions about it.
Questions?
When you say no flea market, do you have a comprehensive list of what you would allow and what wouldn't be allowed?
Uh, so, um, we're working on, um, putting together rules. So I've been looking at the rules for other markets around Vermont, and then we've come up with a variation of that because we do want to try to make it a little bit freer than other markets. But when I say no flea market stuff, uh, I mean, just, you don't you don't want to have it where you end up with ten tables of people selling, you know, several.
Large house stuff.
And then that kind of thing really puts off other, like, crafters, artists, farmers, you know, you want to. Um, we're hoping to keep it more to encourage small, uh, like, home industry type stuff.
So what would be the process for approving someone to participate in that? Did it, would they go through your board or?
So is this town-sponsored or not?
So it would be town-sponsored.
Okay, so that's, I just want to make sure there's no, like, we're not getting into like a discrimination situation.
How do you mean?
Uh, by saying like no flea market.
Oh, okay.
I want open to everybody, but not flea markets. That sounds.
Right. So I suppose the thing is, if you if you set it up to say, okay, this is what this is for. Right, but if somebody wants to organize a flea market, they could do that.
They could come to the board and ask for.
Come to town and ask for it.
Right, right. Say, just that is what this is for.
Make sure the rules are black and white.
Oh, yeah.
Before we.
Yeah.
Glenn?
And you were thinking to start this when and run from what time to what time?
July ninth, starting July ninth, ending October fifteenth. And of course, like, because, uh, you know, the state of Vermont is moving rapidly through the vaccination process. I mean, it sounds like by early July, we should be pretty good. But, you know, we would want to abide by whatever the, you know, whatever the state rules are, and we'd make it very clear that, you know, we want to try to keep everybody safe.
Can we put this on the agenda and bring it back? Like, is that, does this need to be on?
That's the only thing I was gonna ask. Is there a formal policy or process to approve, um, use of the park?
Uh, nope. So this would be something like the, um, Fairhaven Fridays events were. It's it's outside the park. It's more of a downtown in the parking lot area.
All right.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's just a little event that that the town sponsored, um, to kind of get up a little business in that area.
Yeah. Any other feedback? I don't see any issue.
And if anybody's thinking liability, um, we're, I I'm thinking liability. Um, the years ago, a few years back, when we started the Fairhaven Fridays events, we asked BLCT about this.
Yeah.
Um, especially around the alcohol, um, the wine and cheese tasting, and we're covered. So any small event like that, we're okay.
And I would have all vendors sign a form, um, that, um, would spell out, these are the rules, and that it's their responsibility to make sure that they're in compliance with the Vermont state health laws or any licensing requirements for whatever they're producing. So, you know, we make sure that at least you have it in writing, their signature, that they understood that before they participated. So.
Does that stuff need to come back through the board or?
I was just thinking, if we did formalize that at the next meeting, put it on the agenda, and then we could make a motion and approve it if that's the board's.
Are you?
Or do you think you're just gonna approve it as the manager? Which is fine with me, too.
I mean, it's what we've been doing for the Fairhaven Fridays events. We've reached out, brought in vendors, and then they've just done the deal.
I have a problem with.
The only difference is.
There's no.
Are you gonna run it or is a committee gonna?
So, uh, much like the dog park had their committee that ran their small programs, they brought together a committee of Fairhaven residents, and they're gonna run it, and I'm gonna help with any, um, technical issues they have.
The other comment is, I think five dollars is incredibly cheap. Ten dollars is still cheap.
Um, so the Vermont Farmers Market for their, uh, okay, so they pay a membership of twenty-five dollars upfront, and then it's five dollars a week for their space on Thursday. So if we went to ten dollars, it might put people out.
I was just thinking, what, if you wanted to use some money for music?
Right.
I don't think you're gonna get anyone for five dollars.
Right, so we thought we would do things like the fifty-fifty raffles or some other kind of raffles. And whatever money we would take in, we would put into the, we set it to the, um, recreation account, and then just keep a record of, you know, how much we put in and have that money to to spend on, you know, paying musicians or that kind of thing. We actually already have, just so you know, um, about fifteen different vendors, all different types of vendors, people who are really interested. Most of them are Fairhaven residents. Um, so I I think it will go well. And, um, one of the people on the committee, Arthur Licona, uh, this is my boyfriend. But he, um, was, uh, one of the main coordinators of the Vermont Farmers Market in Fairhaven uh, before they moved to Thursdays. And so, you know, and I'm really close with, uh, Paul Horton, who's the president of Vermont Farmers Market. And so we we have a lot of connections with people in markets and a lot of really good advice on how to run a market. So, you know, I I think, um.
What kind of, um, do you have examples of goods of those fifteen people that are interested?
Yeah, so we have.
Just what types of things?
Two veggie farms, uh, a home veggie producer, uh, freshers, a mushroom farm, sprouts and microgreens, honey, eggs, two egg producers, a pickle maker, a soap maker, a baker, um, and then several different kinds of crafters, people who do sewing, um, pottery, et cetera. Uh, two painters, like artists who do really nice paintings, and then carnival treats, like cotton candy, snow cones and popcorn, and that's the start. So.
This is my last question.
Yeah.
What about, uh, I could see people being interested in selling the wine that they make.
Okay.
Is that a no?
So that I don't know.
That could be a no.
With no drinking?
With, you have to have special permits to do alcohol. They would have to come through the town, and I don't, that's.
Yeah, I, that's what I thought.
We can have a separate event for alcohol, but it seems that would, that's a whole other level of oversight for alcohol.
But, uh, say, on the Vermont Farmers Market, like, I looked at their bylaws and rules, and they spell out very clearly what you can and can't sell. And because, I like, I I know some of you know me, and then others of you don't. Um, I did have the Rosewood Cafe there on the corner before COVID came along and closed it. So I I like, I did read the the health regulations of food service and all that in great detail. Um, and so I would want to make sure that whatever rules the vendors are given, make it really clear that, oh, I'm sorry, you cannot sell something that needs to be reclassified.
Getting at, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
So I think there's support, and Joe will coordinate with you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Bringing folks to the park.
What's your next idea? You're busy ladies.
Anybody else for public comment?
Mr. Cole, I have something.
Yeah, state your name, please.
My name is Jenny Kendall. I live up fifteen Cemetery Street.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
I just want to make the board aware of the situation that is occurring in our neighborhood. Um, it appears that someone intentionally or unintentionally, I'm not sure, at some point added either goldfish or koi fish to the pond in the cemetery. And at this point, um, after talking to the state biologist yesterday, he figures they must be, have been in there a couple of years because we are at the hundreds of little tiny fish swimming around in that pond. Um, if they do prove to be koi fish, that's going to be a big issue of eradicating them. Um, and whether it's koi or goldfish, whatever they are, um, there is a possibility that ultimately they could make it to Lake Champlain from being in that pond in the cemetery. Um, I think that the town needs to look into it. I think that the town needs to reach out to Sean Good. He is the state biologist, um, based for our county. Um, and I think we need to get a handle on it sooner than later.
All right, um. Joe, I know you had contact with, I think Jenny reached out to you. I mean, do you have a plan? What's your thoughts on?
Yeah, so Ms. Kendall called this morning, um, and left me a message, and then I did end up touching base with her. And, um, Mr. Sterling this afternoon, they did give me the number to the state biologist, and I'll reach out to him tomorrow morning, um, to see what the what the plan can be. This is, it's gonna require, um, a lot of outreach. What my fear is that we're gonna say, we're gonna go and empty that pond and and get rid of those fish. But what that what's gonna happen is we're also gonna get rid of the turtles and the frogs and the everything else that can't quite get away. So we're gonna have to do a lot of public outreach, work close with the state, um, and then then move forward with the plan, which today was the first day I heard of this, so, um, I'll get a hold of Sean tomorrow.
Is there any immediate action you think that you could take once you look into it more that would contain it within that area, so it can't?
Yeah, I I talked to, uh, Mr. Sterling, and I said, well, maybe we can kind of just start netting them out.
Yeah.
Um, and that seemed, to me, it seemed like a great idea. To him, it seemed less than stellar idea.
Possible.
So. Hire some kingfishers. Yeah.
I really thought when the kids came home and were discussing it, I thought that they were crazy because, I mean, I've lived here twenty-plus years, and it's never been an issue. Um, I think we need to definitely public outreach that if you do not want the fish in your fish tank anymore, they don't get to get dumped into a public body of water. And if you look at the Everglades, that's exactly what's happened with the python population. We certainly don't need, um, koi fish that are in the cemetery pond that then end up in the swamp, that end up in the Potomac River that make their way to Lake Champlain. Um, and if you look at koi fish, if this is what they end up being, they can grow two to three feet in size. Um, and they're really kind of garbage fish, if you will, in that they can live without much, um, way of oxygen. Um, and they do tend to spawn at this time of year. So if we don't look at taking action sooner than later, we're, our hundreds of fish are gonna end up as thousands of fish.
All right, so Jenny, I believe Joe is gonna check into it, and he'll give us an update our our next select board meeting on what the progress is and what what the plan plan might be at that point.
Seems like we can rescreen the outlet.
That's what I was wondering. Could you do?
Screen so we can't get.
Screen the outlet just to hold the problem at bay.
At least temporarily.
Temporarily.
I don't know how big it is. I can't remember. Been down there, but I was long time.
It's big.
The outlet, though.
All my family is buried.
Yeah, but the, is it just like a small pipe that leaves, or is it quite a?
I don't know.
It's a very, not a clean.
You're on it, Joe.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I think it has probably a six or eight-inch culvert that runs, um, on the south end of that pond to the swamp.
Yeah, so we could probably just screen that in a way that.
Doesn't let fish out.
I did check that overflow last night, and there were, uh, no signs that there were little fishies on the other side.
Okay. Good.
All right, well, uh, Joe's on it, and he'll give us an update.
Next week.
The next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else? Public comment?
All right, so we're not talking dog park anymore. We don't need to, only one question. So Joe said that the having the person come out and do the flags was put on hold. I am assuming that will be taken off hold.
I think so.
It looks like your other plans are not panning out so good. Okay.
We we should keep moving forward on the airport. Push push as hard as you can against the state and.
Okay.
It's the same place we were.
Yeah, it's the circle of life.
Yeah, we're kind of running out of places.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Or actually, uh, the idea that, who was it that brought up the idea of, uh, seeing if maybe someone would lease?
Yeah. Ron.
That that'd be something else, maybe, for sure. Good idea.
Have a good night.
Thank you so much. Good night.
A dollar.
I'll do two. Give me two bucks. Um, moving on to department head reports. Police chief?
Um, we've got nine arrests in the last two weeks, mostly been motor vehicle. Had one wanted person that was wanted on felony drug sales. We got a foot pursuit with him. We ended up catching him later, and it was a slight release warrant. So he was free the next day and did not show up to work the next day after he was removed. That's common. Um, we've been trying to maintain a heavy presence in the downtown, um, book patrols and around the area that's been ongoing for the last couple of weeks. Um, I had a car go off the road this morning, left some car parts. I got her in like twenty minutes, so I wish I got lucky. Um, outside of that, I don't have a lot going on. Um, school's back in session this week after being a week off. Do you guys have any questions or concerns?
Questions for Phil?
No.
All right, thank you, Bill. Uh, Aaron was on, he said. Aaron, do you want to go with your report?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. Uh, what was up last week myself? So as well, trying to catch up on how the departments did. Sounds like everyone's did well last week. On the highway, I'm always still been out sweeping as the weather allows, grading, uh, pothole filling. We are starting to get into some, um, different projects. Um, so somebody were aware, they were out on Union Street this, uh, this morning, working on a man, a sewer manhole that we're having an issue with. Um, that'll be something we're still working on here over the next week or so, probably a longer time to solve. The, uh, hundreds of years old manhole that needs some serious work. Uh, water department wise, uh, Mike has been doing par- parallel to plant by himself and with me up there as much as I can. Give him a hand. Um, turning of the season, we are getting more water turn, turn-ons requests, um, coming back to town from, maybe for winter homes or otherwise. Sewer wise, uh, we did have the, um, or the reconstruction meeting with Neil and Bree two weeks ago, and, uh, they're, uh, seem ready, fired up, ready to go. Um, unfortunately, with the way everything's working with ordering and getting processes of construction started, it doesn't look like they'll be on site to actually start physically doing work till June area. Uh, one other sewer thing, heard many of you saw us, uh, on Washington Street at the West Street intersection with a, you know, sewer pump there that was one of the better sewer pumps I've seen in years. We ended up having, I'd say, three or four bricks as well as some concrete from the construction over the summer that finally accumulated just outside the manhole and plugged that line up real good. So us needing, uh, jet truck there a couple of times, as well as a camera to have to get in the line and see what's going on. Uh, but otherwise, everything else is continuing to follow the weather, and hopefully, transitions can go nicer and more stuff can go.
All right, uh, questions? All right, thanks, Aaron. Um, I think you're gonna be up to next here after, what do we got here? Yeah, we got town manager report, and then we'll come back to the, uh, the bids for you to walk through.
Thank you.
Uh, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, very quickly, um, there was a packet, if you saw it, outside the, uh, the boardroom door for restaurant revitalization program the Small Business Administration just released. Um, I printed out some packets. I'm gonna run those down to our our restaurants and see if if we can't get some folks a little bit of revitalization money. Uh, they're calling it a loan that you don't have to pay back. It's not a grant, apparently. It's a loan you don't have to pay back. Um, transfer station stickers go on go on sale May first. This is, uh, like we've done in the past, we're having our, um, early bird special, seven bucks a sticker. Um, they will be sold down at the transfer station, um, to accommodate our residents. Well, we had a great meeting, I think it was Monday, um, with Rutland Regional Transportation. It was Devin, Glenn, um, Bob and myself to talk about transportation issues in town, in the town of Fairhaven. Devin is, Devin is gonna help us write a, write another sidewalk grant. He's, he volunteered his time to do that, which is stupendous. Um, and I've sent all the information to him, so that way he can start that project. We're gonna have another meeting with Devin next week, uh, to kind of walk the area uh, and talk about demonstration projects, making the area a little bit more walkable, um, seeing maybe what bike lanes look like in Fairhaven. Oh, duh. The Adam Street Home, the one that, uh, that has the outstanding tickets, they finally reached out to us. We sent them a letter letting them know that there was a lien placed on the property. They reached out and said they're they're working on cleaning the yard. They reached out and said they're, they're working on cleaning the yard. I spoke with program manager for the playground grant, the Land Water Conservation Trust. They said we should be getting a grant agreement this month. Hopefully soon, the prices of everything continue to rise. We've done great raising money, but now, as we try to spend it, prices keep going up. The state released some additional water grants for those of our residents who kind of fell behind during the COVID pandemic. Deb took the lead on that, she's gonna get more information for us as it comes out. Right now, though, it's, it's being targeted for people who didn't receive last, the last round of funding for, for water. So, she, she has a list of folks she's gonna reach out to. Some of those people that got money last time will not be eligible this time. Oh, additional contract for the fingerprint reader chief, I think there will be no other contracts for that.
No costs.
No. No. There might be some maintenance costs. Regulated, you know, upgrade software, but other than that, there's no, there's no match agreement, there's no, it'll be our machine with all that. It'll hook to the internet, so when we're done with the prints, it'll electronically send to VCIC, will eliminate our mail costs. Right now, we do them on paper and then mail. So, one setup, that'll eliminate that cost. I know the sheriffs didn't take the maintenance contract and they haven't had any issues on there, so I've been debating on which way to go, depending on cost wise.
Oh, the language for the ARPA grant, or the ARPA funds, the 252 that's coming to the town. The rules how we can spend that money did come out, I haven't, I haven't digested that yet, so I'm still working on, on understanding that. Water sewer budgets are back in town hall, we're compiling that and the board will have their first look at the water sewer budget at the next meeting. The proposed water sewer budget. Oh, I had a request from a resident to buy some of the old wooden fence posts that used to line the park. We replaced those wooden fence posts with the marble that's out there now. I don't see why, right now, the posts are just down at the DPW rotting. Does the board have a problem with me selling any of those posts, advertising and then selling to residents?
Unless there's some...
There's no purpose for them.
Unless Aaron has a use for them.
Are they, are they pressure treated four by fours, or?
Yeah.
Fours or sixes? Six by sixes.
Six by sixes.
Six by sixes.
We have used some as we've used for various projects, but they're not in use as well.
How many do you think you have, Aaron, down there?
I do not have an idea this time, I'd have to look tomorrow on, try and come back to you or Joe.
At least, what was replaced, yeah?
Yeah, I don't know, eighteen, two dozen down there.
Oh, okay. But, I mean, I was just at Home Depot last weekend and a four by four by eight post is $27 pressure treated. It blew my mind.
Yeah.
So, a six by six, I didn't even, I didn't even wanna look.
Those, that's for each?
Each.
Building materials, crazy.
It is double. A two by four, pressure treated, eight foot, 10 bucks. Each stick.
One board, yeah. So, what you think, 20 bucks a pop?
I'm just telling you, if we, if we sell them...
Do your homework and leave.
For whatever the price is, then Aaron has to buy them the next time he, needs to.
Yeah.
Okay, they are, were, they were valuable to Aaron, should he need them. Okay, so if, if you sold them for 10 bucks and it costs you 30 or 40 dollars to replace them, you know, we probably would sit there and kick ourselves for...
Sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll hold on, we'll get a, we'll get a complete number, we'll hold on to some, see what Aaron needs.
Hopefully, they're stickered and, you know, off the ground and maintaining their health.
Yeah.
And they're pressure treated, so...
That's all true, right, Aaron?
I know that marble posts we have are being probably in care, but I can't recall off the top of my head knowing even where they would be situated at this point in my property.
Well, that, that should be an upcoming project, knowing what the value is now of a replacement. We oughta sticker them and keep them in good health.
Alright, Joe is gonna reach out to that resident?
Yeah, we'll post it, I mean, I don't wanna just sell it to one individual, we'll post it to give other people the option.
Just keep, just keep what you need, I mean, keep enough for you.
Yeah.
See how?
Sure. Uh, if you've been past town hall lately, you see the, Mr. Ferguson is out here, we're finally getting repairs done to that, that beam and column in the firehouse.
No surprises?
No, it's going pretty smooth. We, there was a, there was a piece of coax that ran for the communications tower, but that was easily negotiated.
Where are the fire trucks?
They're inside at DPW, temporarily. Our summer help started on the 19th, so was that yesterday? You'll be seeing them out cleaning up the parks, cleaning up the cemeteries, getting things ready for summer. And we talked about the koi at the cemetery. That, that's all I got for you.
Okay, questions for Joe?
No.
Thank you, Joe.
If you net the koi, take a YouTube video, though. If you're out there in your suit netting the koi, I think we should.
I think there's plenty, from what I've been told.
No, I think that we could do well, just putting that out for fundraising and such.
There you go.
Catch a fish.
No old business, pump station proposals. Aaron, are you gonna do the presentation or Joe?
I can do it.
Okay, go ahead.
You guys have, I believe, the papers for part of you, going over each vendors.
Yep.
Options as proposed. We do have only one vendor that met all of the RFP. The second one on the list, the progressive of pump services. The only thing they missed to meet the RFP's fact is that it's a different term. The third vendor, Hamblin Associates, they had missing items as required by the RFP, the biggest item being a control panel for Academy Street. The RFP was written to have Academy Street and Adam Street controlled upgrades at the same time. And I asked her if there was just a rough on their part, but they were missing including that control panel itself in their proposal as well as, we didn't get them to term, there were a few other items that were required as of the RFP. In consultation with the wastewater folks and myself going through everything, recommendation would be to award the bid to Pump Services Incorporated for the amount of $55,580 as they met this fact and to have everything required and everything that we believe is needed for both pumps to operate in a fair, good manner for hopefully a long service length.
Questions for Aaron?
And where does that come out to your swag?
We were under that by a little bit, I wanna say, we're about $7,000 or so over what we had projected, but within the project total that we have estimated, we're still well within our range. The projection on the generator was in the realm of almost 40,000 and that came in at 25. So, we're still, we're still in a good range for the, for the whole project.
So, are you looking for a motion to accept that? I'd like to make a motion to accept the Pump Services Inc. proposed for $55,580 mainly because a low bid isn't allowable under our purchasing policy bid procedure on paragraph three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod, discussion on the motion? Aaron, are you comfortable with this company? Have you done business with them prior?
I have not done business with them personally, but I have been, heard word of them numerous times over. They were one of the vendors I was told to make sure to get ahold of and make sure they got an opportunity to bid on it.
So, the reference is checked out, everything's good there?
Does this finish the project? Is this the last bid in the?
Uh, I believe so, yeah. So, this is for the control panels and the electrics, the electronics inside, the generator, and then we did hire a electrician to handle it, so yeah, this should do it.
Only thing left, only thing left is the cocaine, which usually the provider is the one we use for the work that we'll need to do. So, we have already spoken with them and have a quotation for them with our service area. Come on, David, do it.
So, total project is under budget?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? No, alright, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Thanks, Aaron. Acceptance or non-acceptance of the land donation for Five Maple Street?
So, after discussing a proposed donation of land with the Board of Selectmen and Town Legal, it sounds like this, this particular piece of property will be more of a liability to the town of Fairhaven than, than maybe worth accepting it.
Okay.
So, Legal has made the recommendation and I would have to agree with them that the town do not accept this piece of property.
Alright, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Fairhaven declined to accept the offered gift of property located on Five Maple Street on the part of Gary S. Rogers, Alisona Rogers, and Felicity K. Dugan, as it appears that the potential cost of the ownership of the property could outweigh the expected benefit to the town that they would incur, when actuarially, the property would revert to the town.
Email the town.
Alright, you didn't get that clear?
I will tomorrow.
Is there a second to Glenn's motion?
Seconded.
A motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol, is there further discussion needed on? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries. Liquor licenses, I believe there's a few in the packet.
You would think, it seems like they keep coming.
Yeah, a lot of them have been closed.
Yep.
Take more time?
Sure, go ahead.
Proposed motion, let me see, okay, we're gonna, motion to approve the first class liquor license for Scotch Hill Brewing Company.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
A motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod, to approve the first class liquor license for Scotch Hill Brewing Company. Any questions? Is that a, the new one in the downtown?
Yeah.
That's the new one in the corner.
Good, so they're close to opening?
They keep promising me in May.
Perfect.
Yeah, good.
Alright. Alright, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Is there another?
Uh, there's another first class license, a motion to approve the first class liquor license for the American Legion Fairhaven Post Number 49.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jeff, to approve the first class license for the American Legion. Any questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Motion to approve a third class liquor license for the American Legion Fairhaven Post 49.
Here, a second?
Seconded.
A motion by Glenn, seconded by Jeff, for the third class liquor license for the American Legion. Questions on that? No, okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
And moving on to coin drop approval.
So, once a year, the Board of Selectmen can approve up to four coin drops. This is where the local charities will, you know, stand out in the road and ask for a little bit of, ask for coins for donations. This year, we've received six requests and it's up to the board to choose four randomly.
Alright.
Got your cup ready?
I do. I thought it would be nice, and this is just me, if we chose, actually chose four to win instead of two to lose, 'cause it seems like a positive way to do it. Perfect. You know semantics. Clay, you wanna pick a winner?
That's what I assumed. Three there.
I know.
Just a minute. They're all stuck together.
Number three.
Number three? I saw that comment about, yeah. Three, number one, first. Number two.
Number two.
And Jeff, you wanna grab one?
No.
You're gonna do it?
I don't. Five.
Number five.
Or two, I don't know.
Five, I would say.
It was five, I got number two right here.
Number one.
Okay, so the winners this year were the Knights of Columbus, the Dog Park Committee, Hometown Heroes, and the Catholic Daughters of America.
Alright, do we need a motion to approve those, or are we just selecting them out of the hat?
Take a motion, sure.
Might as well make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the four, the Knights of Columbus, the Dog Park Committee, the Hometown Heroes, and the Catholic Daughters of America for this year's coin drops.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol, to approve the coin drops for those four organizations. All in favor?
Can we, before we...
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I would like the discussion around, our coin drop policy says it's from May 1st to Labor Day, and in lieu of the COVID, can we possibly start this July 1 through and do one a month from there, July, August, September, and October?
And you're gonna leave it to who to work out, who guess what?
Joe.
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, I don't think we wanna change the policy, but we wanna make it a temporary because of COVID, is that what you're thinking?
That, that was the only thing.
Pushing it out a little bit.
Sure.
Do you wanna amend your motion to, to that?
Sure, let me, I'll make a motion, amend the motion to approve the four organizations, but the coin drops should, shouldn't start until July 1 and they'll go through October?
One per month.
One, one per month.
Okay, and you're good with the amendment? Alright, Glenn, Aaron.
What, what's the purpose of the once a month? I mean, are we, are we adhering to some law or rule better, or?
The policy doesn't say it has to be one per month, it just gave the time.
No, I know, but you're saying it's COVID related, I'm just wondering, what is the COVID?
July, July is COVID related. I said once a month, 'cause I just think it's, they'd have better luck if people don't see someone there every week.
Every, every week. Everyone tries to do it all in July, for example.
Yeah. They get, the, the first, number four is not gonna get much.
In 2019, we, we updated the coin drop policy to include some concerns around safety that they, so they'll be coming to see Joe probably in town to get the vests and, and the coins, and that's when you talk to them about, to, I'm sure when we reach out to them, there'll be some discussion.
Sure. But, I mean, what, what's the COVID relation for July 1st?
That's when the governor says.
That's when the governor said that everything after July 1, 'cause we're, we're looking at possibly how we canceled or pushed out Memorial Day Parade and Spring Fling to not be considered until after July 1st, we just wanted to be consistent. If we're gonna push Memorial Day Parade out, I don't think we want coin drops where you're standing there, starting the first of May and, and June, it just wouldn't be consistent, I think, Rod.
Okay, but what if he comes, what if something happens and he comes back in the, in June, says, I'm pushing it out again to August? You want?
I reserve the right to push it again.
Then we would, part of the policy a lot gives the Select Board on number nine, the Board of Selectmen reserve the right to revoke permission to hold the coin drop at any time when it deemed such action could not be in the best interest of the town. And that's why I would use that one to, if he comes back and says July... And that's why I would use that one to, if he comes back and says July 1 is no good.
Okay.
I'd like to, last year we didn't have.
If I get asked, I just want to be able to explain the, the logic.
All right, um, any other questions? All in favor of that motion? Uh, Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Emergency management plan renewal?
So what? So there's nothing, so there's nothing to sign on this, but, um, uh, every year we update our, um, emergency management plan, which just has our phone numbers and contact information, um, and that was sitting.
Yep, right here.
Yep, on the table in front of you.
Double, did you check your?
Double check the contact information.
I think it's the same.
I looked through all the names, I didn't look at them.
Not for what?
So you're looking for a motion to, it's, it's the same plan that we handed in last year of just validating the contact information for the, for everybody.
Yeah, and what you'll see, the Board of Selectmen have changed on the back, um, Aaron was added in places and, yeah.
Yes.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
So I just need a motion from the board for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fairhaven Emergency Management Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion. About that?
No, we're just rotating.
Motion was by Glenn, seconded by Jeff this time, so it's next, Rod's next.
Yeah.
Any questions on that, comments? No, all, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement?
So there is something to sign on this one, this is, this is also a yearly, um, signing, this, this puts us into a mutual aid agreement with our surrounding towns, uh, in case of natural disaster, this makes it easier for other towns to request services from us and us to request services from them, and it makes it much easier to be reimbursed from FEMA for those expenses incurred.
And we did this last year or not?
Last year we did this, it was, it was the first time we'd done this last year.
All right, is there a motion for that?
Um, I'll make a motion to renew our Rutland Regional Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
All right, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod.
No, um, uh, we're not obligated to help.
No, we're not obligated to help in any way, if it's a danger or a threat to our, our equipment or people, we don't have to go.
Okay. Just wanted that on the record.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, where do you want me to sign, Jeff is the clerk?
Where do I want to sign? I like this big blank spot.
It should have been just.
It's just for Chris.
Where is it?
Right there.
The authorized rep, yep.
Yeah.
Well, Jeff wanted to get his name out.
No, I'm good.
All right, Solar Project, uh, Preferred Site Designation?
Yeah, so, uh, MHG Solar has provided us with the, um, Preferred Site Designation paperwork. Uh, this site is for the, um, property behind, or it is for the transfer station property, uh, piece of land outback. And we could use a motion for this, and this is for the chair to sign.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we sign the Preferred Site Agreement for MHG Solar LLC.
Okay, is there a second?
Second it.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol to approve the Preferred Site Designation for MHG Solar. You guys want to read it before you? It was in there, you guys are good? Questions?
I, I saw this and I thought, well, okay, is there an option agreement?
Yeah, there is, yes.
Separate.
Well, I, it would be separate, yes, but we, there is a plan to, this is preliminary to the option agreement, I understand that. But there, there was discussion that there will be an option agreement?
Yes, uh, later tonight, we have some paperwork.
We'll be doing that in the executive session, I think, yeah.
All right, uh, any other questions? Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. All right.
Yeah, it's weird that it.
Appointments, Economic Development Committee? I think we have three or four people that are proposed for that.
I, I put, yeah, so Economic Development Committee tonight, I did put them all on one line, which was different than what I've done in the past.
Okay. There are motion for that, probably not from Glenn because he's.
Can we, can we do all of them in?
I think we could do them all at once because it's the same term, right?
Motion to appoint Glenn Travers, Cindy Pritchard, Deborah Fallon, Ju, and Judy Sutherland to the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod to appoint those folks to the Economic Development Committee? Any questions on that one? Anything from the?
Presuming they all want it.
They do.
Yeah, that's what I was. All right.
We're gonna surprise them.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain from that one, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So that motion carries. Um, Rutland Regional Transportation Council. Oh, I missed that one, sorry, yeah.
I make a motion to appoint, uh, Joe, Town Manager, as an ex-officio member of the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Assuming he wants that.
I love that, that's my favorite thing, Town Manager.
Uh, motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod to appoint the Town Manager. Is there any questions on that, comments?
Are you, do you vote, you just go to the meeting?
I go when, yeah, it's, if they need a quorum, I'll vote.
If we, if we need a quorum, and he, he's usually the expertise for areas we're talking.
I assumed you'd go fairly regularly to check in, but I didn't now.
All right, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I made it.
Okay, that motion carries. Uh, Rutland Regional Transportation Council.
Motion to appoint Cindy Adams as representative to the Rutland Regional Transportation Council.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Jeff, seconded by Glenn to appoint Cindy Adams to the Regional Transportation Council.
That was the only applicant, right?
And she did want that, we reached out to her.
I know she did, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, any other questions on that one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, zoning board of adjustment?
Motion to appoint Kevin Durkey to a, uh, three-year term on the zoning board of adjustment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second it.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Carol to appoint Kevin Durkey to a three-year term on the zoning board? Questions on that? Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, motion to appoint Patrick Fraser to the zoning board of adjustment as an alternate for a three-year term. Again, there weren't other people, right, these are like Kevin and Patrick.
We, we posted.
I just don't want to overlook anybody, that's why I'm asking.
No, we started posting before the elections, just to make sure, before the March elections, to make sure we get everybody.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I just want to make sure, that's all.
Sure.
All right, so Jeff made the motion, was there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Rod? Questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Um, parking lot, any updates on the parking lot item?
No, we, I'm still waiting for the bridge, uh, grant open for the Adams Street. Working on that, and the downtown designation is also something that I've been picking away at. Not a lot of movement on that.
Yeah, Glenn?
And our Economic Development Committee is real close to where possibly the next meeting to bring you a marked-up draft of the tax stabilization, so that this, this board at least get a chance to, to say, yeah, we agree with the direction, or hey, hey, you're going right, you need to go left, so.
Okay, any other? Okay, uh, board roundtable? Anybody? Rod, go.
Uh, I know we can't take action, I'm not looking for action, but, um, Joe, on the, um, Adams Street, um.
House.
What's that?
The house.
No, no, the, um. Will be just approved.
Pump station?
The pump station, yes, thank you. Try to beat me to the pump. Uh, the payment plan in the contract, we're not gonna have a repeat of the fence?
No.
Okay, this is after the fact payment?
No, no, it's, yeah, I messed up on that, sorry, Rod, no, we brought it right to the board.
I just want to make sure that we reviewed it and, uh, and.
But we, uh, when I say we, I mean Aaron Herbert, he took his time with this, uh, he went, he was very meticulous with what he wanted, how he wanted it, uh, all the way right through the, the RFP process, right down to the point where it's page by page, who did it right. Um, he actually discovered that, like you said, one person bid low, but they only bid half the project.
Yeah.
So without digging through, yeah, no, we're, we're on top of it, right?
Just didn't want to see a $55,000.
Yeah, check.
Check, yeah.
It's actually in the warrant.
Yeah.
He paused it.
All right, others, questions? Okay. Uh, Jeff, do you want to review the financial reports?
Yep. Motion to pay the payroll warrant, $27,563.98.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jeff, seconded by Glenn for the payroll, um, warrant? Questions on that? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, uh, $74,668.47. And that includes a Aldrich and Elliot payment and, uh, fire truck payment.
Okay.
The last fire truck payment.
Is it the last?
That's the last one.
Second that.
Okay, motion by Jeff for the general fund warrant, seconded by Glenn. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes, and then the checkbook status? Okay. Any questions in general on the financial reports provided, anything you want Joe to look into? Okay.
Our budgets are looking very solid.
Even, I was gonna say all the budgets.
DPW, their burn rate's way down, I didn't calculate it, but there will be better than $2,000 at the end of the year.
All right, um, executive session, looks like we have two items for discussion.
Make a motion to move into executive session for contract negotiations, 1DSA 313A1, and personnel, 1DSA 313A3.
Okay, is there a second?
Second it.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol for the two mentioned executive session items? Any questions? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries.